Now, we will move to the public comment on the proposed PRIA rule. You will note that we have the interests of assuring that everyone has an opportunity to be heard and that people will hear them. We are limiting the time of the actual testimony to four minutes. That is in no way a limit on what can be submitted in writing to the board. And those, I can assure you that those letters and comments, some of which we've already received, are read and reviewed and discussed quite diligently by the board members.
Michelle.
Yes. We'll start with the board.
The first speaker is from the Office of the Public Advocate, Amanda Masters.
Good afternoon. The public advocate commends the Board of Correction for holding this hearing. This is an important first step toward making our jails a place with zero tolerance for sexual abuse. In April of 2015, the public advocate formally petitioned the Board of Correction to promulgate comprehensive rules to implement the Federal Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2003. She submitted complete draft regulatory language to the BOC in April of 2015, as is required by the City's Administrative Procedures Act, KAPA. In September of 2015, our staff met with the BOC and Corporation Council to strongly urge the BOC to exercise its authority to make rules in all of the areas that PRIA covers. This spring, our staff met with stakeholders and the BOC to give feedback on the rule, and we found the BOC open to comments from all interested parties during a robust fact-finding phase. We are pleased that these rules have finally come to a hearing today and will be voted into law soon, and we are very pleased to see that the rules are as comprehensive and cover as many topics as the public advocate originally suggested. None of these sections should be removed or weakened during the final round of this process. Importantly, the Board of Correction adopted parts of the public advocate's petition, which called for recognizing the unique needs of inmates in New York City. The rules go beyond the minimum requirements outlined in PRIA and require putting rape crisis centers, staffed with advocates, inside the facilities where people are housed. This is unprecedented, and if implemented correctly and promptly, this will profoundly improve conditions in our jails, particularly for the women who are detained at Rose M. Singer Center. It will be important for BOC to demand that DOC actually meet deadlines for benchmarks that are set along the way to full implementation. We raise only four points today. Number one, the victims should be affirmatively offered the rape crisis counseling services. As currently written, Section 510D puts the onus on the victim to request a victim advocate to accompany and support them. The language should be revised so that the agency is mandated to offer a victim advocate. The presumptive default should be to provide the advocate, and if the victim does not want the support, they can turn it down. Number two, the Health Service should be responsible for the rape crisis centers. As currently written, the rule does not specify which agency will be responsible for establishing the rape crisis centers, which are referred to as the Initiative in Sections 510E. The responsible agencies should be Health and Hospitals Corporation, H&amp;H, not the Department of Correction. H&amp;H has a deep and decades-long experience in this area. H&amp;H already operates sexual assault response teams, which include rape crisis counselors in the following hospitals in New York City: Kings County Hospital, Woodhull Hospital, Coney Island Hospital, Bellevue Hospital, Harlem Hospital, Metropolitan Hospital, Queens Hospital, Elmhurst Hospital, Lincoln Hospital, North Central Bronx Hospital, and Jacoby Hospitals. Inmates must have access to the same type of care in jail that they would receive walking into any of these city hospitals. A number of laws, such as Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Public Health Service Act, also known as the Hill-Burton Act, and regulations promulgated under that act, the New York State Patients' Bill of Rights, the New York City Human Rights Law, and others protect against discrimination based on source of payment, or race, or ethnicity. Policies or practices that have a disparate impact on people of color are suspect under law. H&amp;H provides rape crisis centers at all of its hospitals, but not at the clinics in the city jails. This may have a disparate impact on people of color, as the vast majority of H&amp;H patients who are in our city jails are people of color. H&amp;H has a moral and a legal duty to provide these services to patients who are incarcerated, and H&amp;H has the experience. DOC has no experience nor any expertise in establishing rape crisis centers. The rule should clearly state that the Health Service, H&amp;H, will be responsible for establishing and overseeing the rape crisis centers. Number three, transportation should be covered by the rule. As currently drafted, this BOC rule mimics a flaw in the PRIA rules that has been identified by the scholars involved in drafting those federal rules. The rules fail to clearly cover transportation, and this mistake should be fixed. The definition of "facilities" in Section 501 does not include transportation in the vehicles that travel between jail buildings or to and from court. The definition should be broadened to explicitly include the DOC vehicles that transport inmates. Without this change, the compliance monitor, the supervision, the monitoring, the video cameras, the agency reporting duties, investigations, and other sections of the rule which specifically refer to "facilities" will not be applied to transportation. Likewise, Section 508 states that the DOC shall not hire or promote anyone who has engaged in sex abuse, quote, "in a prison, jail, lockup, community confinement facility, juvenile facility, or other institution," end quote, but does not yet include transportation. Finally, separation between the alleged abuser and the victim should be ensured not just in housing, but also during transportation and all other programming. Number four, future rulemaking. We encourage the BOC to continue down this path, continue an active rulemaking agenda, and exercise the authority to enforce the rules. When the board finishes promulgating this rule, we recommend further study through a KAPA rulemaking process of what additional trauma-informed programming should be provided in jails to improve outcomes and safety. Many of the inmates held in our city jails have histories of experiencing trauma before they came to jail: rape, child abuse or neglect, sexual abuse as children or young adults, exposure to violence, and drug and alcohol problems. Rikers should have more specialized programming, particularly with trauma-informed practices, to mitigate the harm that is exacerbated by detention. Rape crisis centers are a very first, are a very important first step in that direction, but we must remember that during the Giuliani era, overall resources for jail programming were decimated. Bringing rehabilitation back into the picture with increased programming is long overdue. In conclusion, the public advocate is supportive of the new rules. She is also supportive of the constructive critiques offered by the advocacy community to strengthen the rule. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. One second.
Teri Chung.
Good afternoon. My name is Teri Chung, and I am delivering these comments on behalf of Daniel Drom, the New York City Councilmember representing Jackson Heights and Elmhurst in Queens. We are currently submitting the lengthier written comments, and will use this opportunity to highlight some of the key points. I thank the Board of Correction for taking up the issue of sexual abuse and harassment in Department of Correction facilities, and encourage you to strengthen the proposed rules by adding provisions critical to reform efforts. The Prison Rape Elimination Act standards are an important basis for reform, but they are just that, a basis. The federal statute and its implementing regulations are an outline, a floor, if you will, below which prison and jail facilities should not go. I ask that the Board of Correction develop its own detailed regulations that use PRIA as a starting point, rather than adopting PRIA language wholesale without solutions tailored to DOC facilities. I've submitted comments that stress the need for the BOC and DOC to work with experts in the field to address the issue. A key point that I want to stress is that victims of sexual violence in our jails should be treated according to best practices that these experts have developed. Finally, I want to take the opportunity to highlight sexual abuse and harassment aimed at lesbian, gay, bisexual, and especially transgender individuals who are particularly vulnerable. While there have been great strides in society at large, there remain discrimination and violence against LGBT individuals. This carries over into our jails, where vulnerabilities are exploited by both staff and incarcerated individuals. I ask that the BOC pay special attention to this concern by adopting rules that make the DOC facilities a national model in the prevention of and response to sexual violence and harassment against LGBT individuals. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the Department of Correction, Deputy Commissioner Brand.
Good afternoon. We will be submitting additional comments through your website, which will detail specific progress that the department has made in five distinct categories of PRIA implementation. But I want to start today with saying that safe jails are our number-one priority. The New York City Department of Correction has zero tolerance for sexual abuse and sexual harassment and is absolutely committed to implementing the federal standards in achieving PRIA compliance. To this end, the department has been moving forward with all of its reforms, which will result in a safe environment for both staff and inmates. While we are generally supportive of a rule codifying federal PRIA requirements and believe that documenting our commitment is a fine goal, the rule as written goes beyond the federal standards in the following areas. First, it contains aggressive and potentially unachievable timeframes. There are 28 sections of the rule for which deadlines are conferred that vary between three and 29 months of the effective date. These timelines are arbitrary, more restrictive than the federal standards, complicated to track, and difficult to manage alongside implementation of all the PRIA standards. Imposing overarching deadlines that do not take into account the facility-by-facility process in which the department has agreed to become PRIA compliant is not conducive to embedding and sustaining the culture and practice change necessary within the agency. Setting up reasonable, achievable, and flexible deadlines are essential if the department is expected to meet its goals. Arbitrary timelines only place the department in a position to create an unbalanced set of priorities. The department should have the discretion and maximum flexibility to meet its obligations without the imposition of deadlines which are not balanced against all competing priorities and would interfere with the ability to achieve the goal of having safe jails. Additionally, each segment of the rule, whether effective immediately or within an extended timeline, will be applicable agency-wide. We, however, are moving the facilities to implementation and audits in groupings of three at a time. Those who are in the second or third grouping will have equal responsibility and accountability without having the benefit of training, support for leadership and staff, and a thoughtful plan of implementation that the others were afforded. Secondly, there are overly prescriptive investigations requirements. The department wants to achieve timely reform. As the Nunes monitor noted in his first report, this desire must be balanced with an understanding that implementation and implementing well-reasoned, enduring, and sustainable reforms will take time, and that implementation must progress in a reasonable and responsible manner to ensure that the acculturation and sustainability of such reforms. Also described in the first report, the monitor recommended that the department needed additional time to implement certain reforms. For example, the judgment requires the department to conduct a preliminary investigation for each use-of-force incident within two business days of a use-of-force incident. As noted in the first report, the monitor anticipates that he will be recommending an extension of the time permitted for conducting a preliminary review to ensure the preliminary reviewers have sufficient time to conduct a quality investigation without compromising the overall goals of the consent judgment. And finally, the rule creates burdensome reporting requirements. There is a multitude of additional reporting mandates that are not only labor-intensive, but several require significant in-depth analysis in many focus areas. Our current ability to collect and retrieve information or run reports electronically for much of the data requested is extremely limited. Therefore, the compressed timelines contained within the rules simply do not provide the time necessary to gather data, conduct a thoughtful review, and produce a report to you on findings, outcomes, and/or conclusions, and will result in our noncompliance. Although PRIA was signed into law in 2003, the standards did not take effect until 2012. The department, under a previous administration, applied for and received its first federal grant during that year. That award of this grant eventually allowed the agency, under a new administration, to contract with the Moss Group in late 2014. In January of 2015, the consultants began a comprehensive sexual safety readiness assessment in seven facilities and submitted their report and recommendation to Commissioner Pont in May 2015, one month after the public advocate Letitia James petitioned the board to adopt rules consistent with PRIA. Under the commissioner's leadership, implementation began moving forward in earnest, even while the agency was undergoing broader and substantial efforts under the 14-point anti-violence reform agenda, as well as commitments agreed to under the Nunes consent decree. With few exceptions, DOC has been and continues to follow the timelines and strategies constructed by the Moss Group, all of which are defined in both our federal grant awards and city contracts. Within 60 days of receiving the Moss Group report, the department began a multi-agency, system-wide effort to institutionalize policies and practices that support and sustain PRIA compliance and the prevention of inmate sexual abuse and harassment. In fact, DOC developed an internal schedule to safely and effectively implement PRIA across its facility. It is a thoughtful and balanced plan that takes into account the many aspects of all our encompassing reforms. As the department continues to advance and effect real change, it must balance all competing obligations in a manner that is designed to achieve the overall goal of safety. The constraints of working within arbitrary and capricious timelines and the additional burdensome reporting requirements places the department's progress at risk and could potentially cause regression. PRIA standards and attaining compliance certification by the federal government is an arduous process. It requires absolute commitment, adequate resources, and sufficient time to change culture and practice. In order to even be considered for an audit, each facility must show a demonstrated record of sustained compliance or proof of practice for the 12 months preceding a scheduled audit. We recognize the board would like the department to reach full compliance as expeditiously as possible. We have been and continue to move forward, and will use lessons learned from the facilities that go through the audits first to improve operational practices agency-wide and increase the speed at which we move the remaining facilities through the process. We would like to remind the board, however, that we are currently stretching the capacity of each facility's ability to release staff for training and still maintain safety and security, given our high vacancy rates, the Nunes staff training and related obligations over the next 15 months, as well as other ongoing and equally important reform initiatives. Through our work with the federal court monitors and their team of experts in Nunes over the past year, we learned the importance of balance and how the imposition of inflexible timelines can interfere with progress in setting up appropriate and sustainable systems. Having the flexibility to modify timelines is of critical importance as the department develops new systems. Promulgating rules that include inflexible timelines would be detrimental to our efforts and progress in achieving PRIA compliance. The following assertion is contained within the board's statement of basis and purpose of proposed rules: "In recognition of the unique characteristics of individual correctional agencies, facilities, and inmate populations nationwide, the PRIA standards afford discretion and flexibility to agencies in combating sexual violence." We ask the board to follow the federal government's lead in acknowledging the need for flexibility and discretion in achieving PRIA compliance. As you contemplate the final form of the rule, please consider these legitimate concerns raised by the department, and amend the rule in a way that eliminates arbitrary or conflicting deadlines, requires the department to provide the board with scheduled, detailed reports on the progress with the Moss Group implementation plan, and allows us to do this work and to do it well. Thank you.
Thank you. One second. So, this is a, this is a public hearing, and we wish to hear from all interested parties. So, we're not going to engage in back-and-forth debate, but we will allow questions from the board and efforts to get clarification, but no debate, as much as I feel the need myself. One of the reasons the board believes that it's important to have timelines is because we're, we, our review of past practice regarding certain elements of the response to sexual, sexual abuse on Rikers Island demonstrated no action by the department over extended periods of time. We've been told by the department that you are now working closer to rule in terms of what, what PRIA expects, but could you let me know, could you tell the board currently, for example, in the past six months, you know, we asked you for data, and you told us there were 250 staff on inmate allegations in the six-month period from January 1st to June 30th, and, and only 24 of them have been, have had completed investigations so far. So, why should we provide extended timelines when we're dealing with critical issues of investigation, for example, that not, that extending timelines means that people's, people's allegations are not responded to? I understood that the department said that it was acting in terms of its investigations according to the expectations of our rule and of PRIA as well, but yet, as of right now, less than 10% of the, of those over the past six months, and I understand that half of those probably occurred in the last three months, but that would still be less than 20% of the, of the cases. So, so I want to know why we're going to be, you're going to be responding to substantial allegations of sexual violence on Rikers Island if you're asking for more and more time on it, because from my perspective, it looks like you're not responding and continue to not respond.
A new division order has been implemented within, within the ID Division. That was done within the last 30 days. I can tell you that it is now staffed with a deputy director, two supervisors, and eight specialized investigators. Every allegation of sexual abuse is responded to within 24 hours. Just because an investigation has not been closed, per se, does not mean that there is not an ongoing investigation and has not been responded to.
What's your expectation? Okay, fine, that's fine. I think we've heard your comments. We appreciate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to just object to the form of the chair, but I'll, I'll go along with it right now, but I, it is traditional that we have the chance to talk with, to ask questions of, of people who are testifying in front of us, and if we have more than one question about their response, usually the board has been able to ask those questions, but if that's your ruling right now, I'm not going to object. The ruling wasn't particularly focused on the contentions, the submission of the department. We have had a lot of opportunity to debate that, those things with the department. We'll have more opportunities to debate, to debate them. What I will allow from the body is questions, but not debate with the public, with the speakers. And I appreciate the impulse, believe me, I do, based on what was submitted as testimony. But questions are what we want.
One question. Would the Department of Correction have the opportunity to provide a statement concerning what they, what they think is more feasible concerning flexibility or timeline?
They certainly have that opportunity.
Okay.
As I noted.
Specifics.
We've had a lot of back-and-forth on the timing question. Yes, for the public record, we've had a lot of debate with the department.
Hello. My name is Kelsey Diavola. I'm the Jail Services Social Worker at Brooklyn Defender Services. And first off, just like to thank you for this opportunity. And BDS also echoes what the Legal Aid Society's Prisoners Rights Project submitted, much more detailed testimony. And we also submitted a longer version of our testimony today. So, our, our testimony today will be focusing on our client stories and the people who are directly affected. So, unlike a state prison system where the population is relatively static and predictable in its changes, New York City jails are characterized by short stays and frequent reincarcerations. In light of these facts, the board's rules should include protocols for people to report sex abuse after discharge, with a full range of investigatory action and referrals for prosecution, as well as an obligation for DOC and H&amp;H to facilitate referrals to rape crisis counseling advocacy. Additionally, the board's rules should provide for separation between people who have been sexually abused and their alleged perpetrators with other involved parties should they discharge and return to custody. So, Mr. C. was referred to me by an attorney after learning he was being denied food by a male officer. When I met with Mr. C., he disclosed and said the officer denying him food was the same officer who, a couple of years ago, during a separate incarceration, watched and encouraged the rape of Mr. C. by other men. Mr. C. was brutally raped by three men inside the bathroom of his dorm while the male officer watched. Mr. C. has since undergone surgery to repair the tissue damage done to him that night and has made multiple suicide attempts by swallowing razors. Two years later, Mr. C. was in the custody of the same male officer. The officer remembered Mr. C. and shared with other residents of the unit that Mr. C. was raped repeatedly and would only address him as pussy and faggot. Not only did this male officer humiliate Mr. C. and make it impossible for him to be safe, this male officer continued to work under DOC for a number of years, where his actions were not secret or hidden behind closed doors, but in the open. Jail systems are tasked with significantly more transportation responsibilities than our state prison systems. Rikers Island, with its remote location, presents a unique set of challenges which come with significant risks. We encourage the board to, to address these, to address its rules and the unique qualities of New York City jails to ensure that all areas in which people are held, including in transport, are adequately supervised, monitored by video surveillance, and that staff in these areas receive appropriate training. Getting to and from court involves long bus rides, typically with two officers present and no supervisory staff onboard. These vehicles present a tremendous risk to the safety of people in transit, and there have been documented cases of rape by correctional staff on correction buses. The board must require that buses be monitored by video surveillance and that protocols be established to determine some notion of scheduling. An attack may occur off-vehicle itself, so there should be some method by which to track unscheduled delays, stops, or other activity which could alert supervisors to possible issues. On the day Ms. A. was raped, she had appeared in court earlier with her lawyer. After her appearance, she had requested to leave on the 3:00 p.m. bus back to Rikers, and it was while she was in transit that our client was raped by a male officer on the back of the bus in a parking lot on Rikers Island, all while the driver of that bus sat and watched. When she reported, the bruises on her wrists and thighs were clearly visible. These two officers held Ms. A. against her will and tortured her without any one noticing or questioning the missing bus, the missing officers, the missing woman, or why it took almost 12 hours for Ms. A. to travel from court to her housing unit. We reiterate the concerns raised in others' testimony about access to in-person reporting channels and rape crisis intervention services that are not part of the DOC chain of command. The vast majority of people on Rikers Island are held there for pre-trial detention because they cannot afford bail. An individual with an open case may be appropriately cautious about interacting with law enforcement. Fears about reporting officer misconduct or other safety issues in the jail are commonly based on a reasonable fear that making reports may lead to retaliation. Cutting off the individual from their court-appointed advocates is absolutely necessary, is absolutely necessary, that people have access to civilians who can accept their reports safely and confidentially, confident. Finally, we encourage the board to consider this opportunity in rulemaking to require DOC and H&amp;H to, at a minimum, develop policies and procedures to identify, accommodate, and ensure safety for people with developmental disabilities, intellectual impairments. Mr. D. is a young man with moderate mental retardation as well as mental health issues. During his incarceration, he was frequently the target of extortion and harassment. Mr. D. had trouble following the rules and was disliked by many correction officers. As a result, he never felt comfortable asking for their help, even in the most extreme of circumstances. Mr. D. learned to tolerate Mr. D. learned to tolerate the abuse he suffered while incarcerated until he finally told us that what he had described as horseplay had gone too far. He was being forced to endure sexual abuse by another person in his dorm, ignored or undetected by staff. Unfortunately, he informed us and we were able to secure Mr. D.'s transfer to another unit and eventually out of custody. So once again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to testify in front of you, and, you know, we hope that you, that the experts you have heard from today and previously help shape your final rules in a way that encourages greater accountability and, most importantly, will protect our neighbors in city jails from the horrors of sexual abuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to correct the record, I'm Jean Becaria, the Deputy Director at the National Organization for Women in New York City. I work with Sonia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As a women's rights organization with a 50-year history of advocating for survivors of rape and sexual assault, we are here today to urge you to take rape seriously and fulfill your charge of ensuring the safety and fair treatment of all individuals in the Department of Corrections custody by strengthening the proposed rules to meet and exceed the requirements of the Federal 2003 Prison Rape Elimination Act. The failure to adequately address sexual assault in our city jails has been well documented, and the rate of staff sexual abuse of women and other detainees is unquestionably alarming. In 2014 alone, there were 116 reports of sexual assault and rape at Rikers. Of these, more than half were allegations made against corrections officers. Only two of these complaints were reported to the NYPD. Rape and sexual assault are violent crimes that can strip a victim of their sense of autonomy and control. For those who are detained or incarcerated, these injustices are immeasurably magnified. This is a human rights violation that we cannot allow to continue to happen on our watch. We urge you to strengthen the proposed rules considering the following. First and foremost, victims must be treated within a framework that begins with believing. This means that reports of sexual assault are taken seriously, measures to separate victims from alleged assailants are immediately put into place, and investigations are comprehensive and unbiased. This clear and unambiguous starting point ensures that resources are prioritized for investigating claims and protecting victims, changes that must be made to truly put an end to sexual abuse behind bars. Sexual assault complaints must be investigated in a timely and comprehensive manner by an external independent body to ensure a fair process that protects the confidentiality of the victim and helps prevent retaliation. Third, systems must be established to support strong investigations and the preservation of evidence by increasing the number and placement of cameras and maintaining security footage for a minimum of five years. In fact, because it can take so much time for a victim to feel that they are able to safely make a claim or report, we recommend that footage be maintained indefinitely as long as sexual abuse remains a clear problem. Last, perpetrators must be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law. Otherwise, we're sending a message that we do not care enough about these individuals. No one, regardless of circumstance, no one deserves to be sexually assaulted. No one deserves to be raped. If perpetrators never face punishment, this will continue to happen unabated. The 2003 Prison Rape Elimination Act set out to end sexual assault in jails more than a decade ago. In that time, countless women, transgender individuals, and men have been violated in New York City jails without recourse. I urge you that you have this incredible opportunity to make lasting change to an unacceptable culture of violence. We hope that you will strengthen the proposed rules to ensure effective and real enforcement toward ending rape and sexual assault in New York City jails. And we will be submitting further detailed testimony along with this verbal statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristin, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Jane Doe, who was at Rikers, and this is an excerpt from her testimony. So Corrections Officer Santiago repeatedly raped and sexually abused Jane Doe while she was retained at Rikers. After this had been going on for months, Santiago and other corrections officers encouraged inmates to threaten and bully her because they believed that she had reported him. So on May 7th, 2013, the corrections officers and inmates refused to allow Jane Doe out of her cell to perform basic functions like eating or showering. On May 9th, Jane Doe told Correction Officer Anderson that she was suicidal and was escorted to the Mental Health Department. At Mental Health, Jane Doe broke down crying and told Linda Morrow, a mental health clinician, about Santiago's sexual abuse. Ms. Morrow told Jane Doe that she, there was nothing that she could do, and she was escorted back. Staff continued to deny her food and the opportunity to shower for the remainder of the day. The next day, on May 10th, after approximately 48 hours without food and after being subjected to continued harassment by the other inmates, Jane Doe told Captain Cox once again that she was suicidal, and again she was escorted to Mental Health. This time, she tearfully told a medical doctor, Mary Deveson, about Santiago's rapes and sexual abuse. The doctor examined her, but told her that she couldn't do anything. Two inspectors came from the NYC Department of Investigation from the Inspector General's office, and they spoke with her. She told the agents about the rape and other abuse that she had suffered at the hands of Santiago over the previous months. Nevertheless, now more than two years later, Jane Doe has not received a written determination of her complaint. Shortly after speaking with the inspectors, Jane Doe discovered that the other corrections officers already knew that she had reported Santiago's abuse. The corrections officers called her a snitch, and though she was finally able to eat after more than 48 hours, they refused to open her cell door to allow her out. On several occasions, corrections officers stood outside her cell and berated her, and multiple officers told her that she was wrong for reporting Santiago. Corrections Officer Smalls asked Jane Doe why she had reported him and told her that all the corrections officers were angry with her. The city failed to take any action to protect Jane Doe from the continued retaliation by the Rikers corrections officers. Thank you.
Should I move ahead and then come back to her? Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm going to read a statement about Title IX. "The women and girls of New York City hereby seek response and redress under Title IV of the Civil Rights Act. This includes, but is not limited to, Title IX of the Higher Education Act applicable to the Board of Corrections and city jails. Starting today and continuing throughout the process, up to and including all appeals and final determinations, we expressly seek response and redress only under the substantive and procedural requirements of Title IV and/or Title IX." Applicable to the redress of matters covered by both Title IV and Title of the Civil Rights Act. "Under no circumstances do we submit to or accept response and redress under the Federal Campus Save Act, the Federal Violence Against Women Act, or any state law or school-based policy or procedure. We choose response and redress solely under the Title IX and/or Title IV because we have suffered severe or pervasive harm on the basis of sex and it has interfered with our access to educational programs that will allow us to re-enter society and enjoy a just and fair society. We understand that response and redress exclusively under Title IX and Title IV ensures that relevant oversight agencies such as the Office for Civil Rights and the Department of Education will have jurisdiction and authority to prove recourse in the event of noncompliance, which is not possible if redress occurs under any other law or policy." Thank you.
I will be reading testimony from a survivor on Rikers, also a victim of Corrections Officer Santiago. "During Jane Doe I's detention at RMSC, Santiago regularly raped her, at times as many as four times a week. When Jane Doe I tried to resist, Santiago would often roughly grab her and tell her that she, quote, 'knew better,' unquote. On several occasions when Jane Doe I disobeyed Santiago or when Santiago was displeased by something Jane Doe I had done, he would punish her by anally raping her. Santiago knew where Jane Doe I's mother lived and would park his car outside of her home, observe Jane Doe I's family, and later report his observations to Jane Doe I, reminding her to, quote, 'make the right decision,' end quote, and implicitly threaten her family. Santiago also kept Jane Doe I from resisting or reporting his sexual abuse by threatening that after she was released, she would live with him, keep his house clean, and, quote, 'never go anywhere,' end quote. Santiago told Jane Doe I that he, quote, 'wanted her to be his,' end quote. Jane Doe I attempted to walk away, but Santiago forcefully restrained her by grabbing her arm, hurting her, and telling her, quote, 'I am not done talking to you,' end quote. When Jane Doe I told Santiago that he was hurting her arm, Santiago tightened his grip. He informed Jane Doe I that he would be working an overnight shift that evening and instructed her to meet him in the dayroom after the captain's rounds. She obeyed because she believed that she would be subject to physical and other retaliation if she did not acquiesce to Santiago's demands. That night, Santiago raped Jane Doe I for the first time. From this time until Jane Doe I's release from RMSC in the summer of 2009, Santiago regularly and repeatedly raped Jane Doe I. Jane Doe I met Santiago in the dayroom when instructed, believing she had no choice. Santiago frequently demanded that Jane Doe I perform oral sex on him and would then rape her. While raping Jane Doe I, Santiago would often pull at her hair, grab her shoulders, and choke her. Often, Santiago tried to prevent Jane Doe I from getting to her feet after he raped her. Santiago regularly reiterated that Jane Doe I should not tell anyone about his abuse. As a result, Jane Doe I felt trapped and under constant threat of physical and other retaliation by Santiago. Jane Doe I was afraid that Santiago would retaliate against her if she resisted. She knew that, as a correction officer, he could easily find her at RMSC and she would be unable to avoid him. Santiago regularly and repeatedly raped Jane Doe I in this manner until late 2012. As before, Santiago was rough with Jane Doe I, forcibly maneuvering her and hurting her as he raped her. Frequently, when Jane Doe I started to walk away from him, Santiago would grab her arm and pull her back. When Santiago was aware that she spoke to or even made eye contact with other correction officers, he would get angry and tell her that she would live at his house after being released from Rikers. On several occasions when Santiago was displeased by something Jane Doe I had done, he would punish her by anally raping her. On at least one occasion, Santiago punished Jane Doe I for ceasing to perform oral sex on him by anally raping her. In addition, Jane Doe I was concerned about sexually transmitted diseases and asked Santiago to use a condom. He refused and continued to have sexual intercourse with her without a condom. After Jane Doe I requested that he use a condom the first time, Santiago anally raped Jane Doe I as punishment. Thank you for your time.
My name is Alyssa Canizaro, and I work at the National Organization for Women in New York City. I'm here today with my colleagues and fellow activists of the Jails Action Coalition to tell the Board of Corrections to take rape seriously and ensure safety and dignity for all those in custody. I'm honored to read the testimony on behalf of a survivor of sexual assault on Rikers, Kathy Morse, who could not be here today. Here are her words. "When I was incarcerated, the word 'hope' became my mantra. I hope this is all a nightmare. I hope that the judge gives me bail. I hope that I do not get assaulted or raped while incarcerated. I hope I do not lose my mind. I hope that I do not get sick and have to be treated by the medical staff at a correctional facility. I hope that I have a home to go home to. I hope that I'm able to find a job when I'm released. I hope I survive this. I was both assaulted and raped. I will not go into the details, as it is very personal and private and something that to this day I continue to still grapple with. I remember laying in my cot after being raped, trying to figure out how to ease the pain, how to get up, but most importantly, how to stop the bleeding without anyone finding out, to hide the bruising. I recall being so scared and afraid to go to medical, to tell anyone. I covered myself up as best as I could, stayed away from others and isolated myself. I was not going to allow them to get the best of me. I remember each court trip I had, begging my attorney to get me out, to get the judge to grant me bail, that I couldn't go back to Rikers, that I did not want to spend one more second in that holding cell in the courthouse, watching the roaches crawl on the floor and walls around me, to not have to board that inmate transport bus for the return trip back to Rikers, to what became my private hell. I had hoped that one day this nightmare would end, that I would survive, that no one would do anything else to me. No matter how bad the ache in my chest was, no matter how much my stomach hurt, or how I could not eat, I never lost hope. I kept going despite the nightmares and panic attacks, which continue to this day, the sleepless nights, the isolation, the fear. I still had and continued to have hope. Thank you."
All right.
This is a public hearing for the Board of Corrections, so we can hear, and we listen very, very intently, and we will review the entire record of testimony. That's what this meeting is all about. So please direct your attention and your comments to us. We have the task of finalizing the rules, and your testimony is very important in informing us and helping us to focus on what needs to be focused on. So let's all stay focused on that. Thank you. Please.
I'm here to talk about the You Have Options program and the 20 strategies that all law enforcement services should adopt in order to encourage survivors of sexual assault to speak up. A huge concern for survivors is the fear of not being believed or have their confidentiality violated, which oftentimes prevents them violated, which oftentimes prevents them from speaking up. The You Have Options Program is created to counteract these issues, giving survivors control over every aspect of investigation. First, a victim should be offered three options when reporting. One, a report without opening an investigation, a partial investigation, or a complete investigation. The person reporting can also choose to remain anonymous, should know about their options before making a report, and receive a clear explanation on any part of the process. When making a report, he or she should have control over who they want to report and how. This means they can use an online form or ask an advocate to report on their behalf. When meeting with law enforcement, he or she should have complete control over the location and the time of the report. And also have the option to disclose as much or as little information as possible. They should also be allowed to stay with an advocate for the remaining of the process and end the interview at any time for any reason. After making the report, the survivor should remain in control, should not be pressured to participate in an investigation. Law enforcement officers should be responsible for the victim's comfort by understanding the victim's unique situation and addressing any barriers preventing him or her to provide any information during the reporting process and the investigation. An investigation should be focused on the suspects and how the victim was made vulnerable and accessible in order to prevent the victim from feeling guilty. He or she should remain in control, setting the pace of the investigation and requesting for any steps to not be conducted, and stopping the investigation at any time without an Police departments with this program place saw an increase in sexual assault reporting, and it shows that more services should adopt these elements in order to encourage the victims from speaking up more. Thank you.
Please, please. Excuse me, Ms. Lynn.
I have a question. What, I pray, where is this program in placing any correction facilities or in large cities that may be referenced?
San Diego. Yes, there are eight metropolitan water and social facilities currently, and we've got two police, but no public facilities.
Judy Yu.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Yu, and I'm the Director of the Juvenile Justice Project at the Correctional Association of New York. We coordinate, one of the things we do is to coordinate the Juvenile Justice Coalition, which is a network of child advocacy groups, legal service providers, alternative sentencing programs, and community-based organizations, working to make the juvenile justice system in New York State more fair and effective. We have a working group that focuses on LGBTQ issues, and I am speaking on behalf of the Coalition today. I wanted to excerpt some written testimony that we prepared, which was sent to you, to focus specifically on 16- and 17-year-old transgender youth in the custody of the Department of Corrections. Based on our collective experience and expertise on LGBTQ justice system-impacted youth, we want to focus on the fact that transgender youth are at risk for sexual abuse and are currently unable to access the Department of Corrections' voluntary housing unit for transgender women ages 18 and up. New York is one of only two states, as I'm sure you know, where youth are automatically treated as adults in the criminal justice system at age 16, regardless of the severity of the alleged offense. And as a result, we do have 16- and 17-year-olds at Rikers. While there is a plan in place to move 16- and 17-year-olds that was recently announced, this will take many years. And in the interim, BOC must take immediate steps to ensure that the vulnerable population of transgender youth are protected from well-documented risks of sexual abuse. There are studies that show transgender women face an extremely high risk of sexual abuse while incarcerated or detained, and the Academy, American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry also has research that shows the particular risks for transgender youth for sexual assault, as well as suicide attempts due to mistreatment. For these reasons, there are real particular challenges that our transgender youth at Rikers currently face. We appreciate the Board of Corrections' decision not to incorporate Pria Standard 115.42G, which could negatively impact the operation of the transgender housing unit, or a similar voluntary housing dedicated to transgender people in custody. However, it's our understanding that the unit is on the brink of closure, even without the explicit incorporation of this provision. This alternative housing is critically important for the women it serves, and we just wish to make a comment that it is also a single option that's not able to meet the housing needs of all transgender people. Youth are one such population due to the sight-and-sound separation of adults and adolescents in dock custody. We support the continuation of the trans housing unit for all transgender women who volunteer to be housed in the unit, but we also urge the Board of Corrections to consider the best practice of placing individuals based on self-identified gender identity. So we have several recommendations, which I'm just going to spell out here. We recommend that all transgender youth are placed in housing units by their gender identity, unless the young person objects to such a placement. This is a standard that is, the Pria Standard requires that the placement decision be made on a case-by-case basis with consideration for the individual's health and safety, and so this is why we support that. We also want to note that isolating youth is not an appropriate alternative to placing youth based on the gender identity and should not be relied upon to safely house transgender youth. Research shows that isolation is extremely harmful to the well-being of adolescents, who suffer greater physical, emotional, and psychological harm from being placed in And again, I want to emphasize that the views of the individual should always be a prime consideration in terms of housing decisions. We also want to know that the Board of Corrections should consider and adopt the New York City Administration for Children's Services LGBT anti-discrimination policies and best practices, and ensure that 16- and 17-year-olds in dock custody are placed in facilities based on their gender identity and preferred housing arrangement. So we already have a city agency working with a similar population of youth involved in the justice system, and their policy and practice is to place youth in facilities based on their gender identity and to assess the youth's views of their own safety. Youth are not automatically placed according to gender identity, although ACS acknowledges this is generally the best practice, but they consider youth's own views. The Board of Corrections should also adopt policy and practices that are consistent with the spirit of the New York City Human Rights Law and Mayor de Blasio's executive order ensuring that transgender people are able to use facilities in accordance with their gender identity. Even if correctional facilities are not covered by New York City Human Rights Law, though we believe that they are and should be, as citizens of New York City, 16- and 17-year-olds have the expectation that they won't be discriminated against by city government. Discrimination facilities on account of gender identity is contrary to the spirit of the New York City Humans Rights Law. And Mayor de Blasio's recent executive order and the accompanying extensive media campaign has made it clear to all New Yorkers that transgender people have the right and expectation that their identity will be honored and respected while using bathrooms and other facilities in city-owned buildings. Transgender youth in city-owned correctional facilities should have no less expectation of full respect for their identity. And last but not least, we recommend that the Board of Corrections should adopt policies and practices that are consistent with the recommendations of all mainstream child welfare and social science organizations, that protection from discrimination and affirmation of identity are essential to transgender youth's well-being. Transgender 16- and 17-year-old youth do not currently have a safe alternative for housing at Rikers and are particularly vulnerable to sexual abuse and mistreatment. Youth detained in the juvenile justice system in New York City are protected by state law and ACS's LGBTQ non-discrimination policies. We urge the Board of Corrections to adopt ACS's LGBT anti-discrimination policies and best practices. 16- and 17-year-olds in dock custody should be housed based on their gender identity, and the safety needs and views of each transgender youth must be prioritized. Thank you.
Actually, that was Dory Lewis, and I'm from the Legal Aid Society Prisoners Rights Project.
The R ran into the I.
We urge the Board to adopt its proposed rules. There's no question that they set an important framework. But at the same time, any argument that the requirements of the national standards are enough, that they're extremely burdensome to implement, or that the timeframes required by the proposed rules are too stringent, is simply wrong. As the Department of Justice itself said, the national standards only set the floor. Here, given the department's longstanding history of violence and culture of indifference to these kinds of complaints, clearly more is necessary. Last winter, I met a gay man who told me he'd been repeatedly sexually abused while in protective custody. The abuse escalated from sexual comments to telling the man to undress, and the officer watching him naked in his cell and in the shower, to touching the man in his buttocks, legs, and penis, to masturbating this man several times. The man didn't report the abuse right away. There were lots of reasons for the delay. He didn't want to talk to DOC staff about being gay. He was embarrassed. He was scared. The officer had made clear he had the power to remove him from protective custody, and he didn't think he had anyone he could tell who would believe him. After all, he'd been previously convicted of a felony. He had no physical proof. There were no cameras in the area, so it would be his word against that of an officer. Eventually, he did report. Months later, he has no idea of the results of the investigation. So what are a few of the many things that experiences like this tell you about what the proposed rules need to require? It tells you that stronger rules regarding supervision are needed. According to this man, there were almost never supervisors present. He said that at most, a captain showed up twice per shift for rounds that lasted less than five minutes at a time, and that the captain never talked to prisoners on the unit. Once the captain left, the officer knew that he was on his own, that the captain probably wouldn't come back, and that certainly he wouldn't be back anytime soon. He said that rounds didn't matter much anyway, because the officers knew when the captains were coming, because there were calls that came from other officers. He knew that these calls came from other officers, telling them that supervisors were coming, because when the officers got these calls, they would tell, they would tell prisoners to do things like take down a curtain, close a gate, put out a cigarette. So to impact the extent of abuse, the proposed rules, the requirements need to be more explicit than even those that you propose in the rules. You need to require that, to the extent possible, supervisors be present in housing areas and program areas, and that at a minimum, two rounds per shift be conducted, sometimes close together in time, so that no staff person can assume that they're safe from scrutiny. You also have to make explicit that calling ahead to alert staff that supervisors are coming will be taken seriously, and that then discipline will be imposed when it happens. It tells you that cameras need to be required throughout, and certainly where sexual abuse has been alleged to have occurred. Cameras could have deterred this abuse, and even if they didn't, they could have corroborated this man's allegations. It tells you that footage needs to be maintained for as long as possible, but that 90 days, as you seem to be proposing, isn't enough, given the obstacles to reporting. This man only reported because he was desperate, and it's common for there to be substantial delays in reporting. It tells you that if you want people to report abuse, they have to have some confidence that they won't end up worse off than before. At a minimum, they need to know that if they complain, they won't be disciplined for coming forward with the report. The department's staff had already betrayed this man's trust. Do you really expect him or other persons in his situations to turn around and trust the department to make a fair and reasoned judgment about whether his complaint was made in good faith? It tells you that there needs to be a rule requiring that repeated or prior allegations of abuse by staff that show a pattern of misconduct need to be given substantial evidentiary weight. This man suspected that this officer was sexually abusing other prisoners, but he couldn't and didn't know for sure. But there were other allegations of abuse involving this officer. By chance, we even found one in our own office's records. Patterns of misconduct are important evidence in these kinds of cases. Prior allegations of abuse, including of uncharged crimes, are admissible in New York State criminal prosecutions, and they're admissible as evidence of propensity in the federal, in federal civil and criminal cases. Sexual abuse often comes down to he said, she said, or like in this case, he said, he said. If this kind of misconduct is to be stopped, there needs to be a rule making clear the relevance of these kinds of evidence. And finally, it tells you that if an officer is permitted to guard prisoners after a credible allegation or repeated complaints of sexual abuse, that the need for additional supervision of that particular staff person needs to be considered. In this case, without footage and without DNA, even though I find this man to be one of the most credible I have ever interviewed in my years of doing this work, he was probably right, and he won't be believed. Without DNA and without footage, camera footage, it's likely that his complaint won't be substantiated at the investigative level, or certainly that the officer won't be terminated at a disciplinary hearing. And there are going to be lots of cases like this, where an investigator or an oath judge will decide the allegations can't be proven by a preponderance of the evidence. But that doesn't mean that the abuse didn't happen, and it doesn't mean that the officer doesn't present a real risk. You require consideration of additional supervision in locations where abuse has been alleged to take place. You likewise need to require an assessment of whether particular staff needs to be reassigned or more closely supervised. The Board has an opportunity to make a real difference. We urge you to take it. Thank you.
Please.
In summary of recommendations, the second one stated, oh, sorry.
Stated that all allegations of sexual abuse need to be referred to an investigative agency external to DOC, so that investigations could be unbiased and thorough. Could you provide the Board with some possible alternatives that you think would work?
In terms of referrals to outside investigative agencies?
Yes, what kind of, what kind of agency, what agency?
Either the Department of Investigation or law enforcement is what we're talking about, that they should automatically, all staff, all allegations of staff sexual abuse, not necessarily harassment, but of staff sexual abuse, should be referred to law enforcement. We think they should be investigated by law enforcement, but we understand the Board doesn't have power to require that. We do suggest that the Board have some kind of hearing or follow-up with the Department of Investigation to get some kind of clarity from the Department of Investigation about what allegations they are kicking back. Also, with respect to inmate-on-inmate sexual abuse, as we read the Department of Corrections' new directive, which conceivably is a bit unclear in this area, we understood it to say that inmate-on-inmate rapes should be referred to the Department of Investigation, and only inmate-on-inmate rapes. That term is not defined in the directive, so I don't know what they mean, but I do know that from talking with large numbers of inmates over the years, most inmate-inmate allegations also contain some allegation, if you probe at all, some allegation of facilitation, if not direct encouragement by staff, and that there should be some investigation conducted, at least preliminarily, to see whether there is a conflict in having the department investigate itself in those instances.
Thank you.
Shirley.
Veronica Vella.
Good afternoon. I am also with the Prisoners Rights Project of the Legal Aid Society, and I wanted to talk a little more about the risks that transgender prisoners face in custody, and agree with a lot of what the previous speakers have said. The Board now has the opportunity to make a big difference in this area, and I think they can only do so if they not only adopt the rules that they've proposed, but strengthen them further. It's been well documented that transgender prisoners face a substantial risk of sexual harassment and assault in jails and prisons, and it's especially true for transgender women, who are housed in male facilities. Some of the stories we've heard in our work as advocates are detailed in our written testimony. They involve women in DOC custody who have been repeatedly paced at risk by being housed alongside male prisoners, even after those prisoners have expressly threatened the women prisoners. As a result, they have experienced repeated assaults at the hands of both prisoners and staff, who either commit the abuse or allow it to happen. Given how frequently the abuse or allow it to happen. Given how frequently individuals continue to be housed based entirely on their genitalia, these risks, these stories are shocking, but not surprising. The most important way to address and lessen this risk is to treat everybody consistent with their own gender identity. In the prison-jail context, this is especially important when it comes to housing. Specifically, this means no longer housing incarcerated people based entirely on their genitalia. Now, PRIA and the rules that the BOC has proposed do provide that there must be a case-by-case evaluation of how to house transgender persons, and that serious consideration should be given to a transgender person's own views with respect to his or her own safety. This is a very good step, but we propose language that makes a clear presumption that persons will be housed consistent with their gender identity. Under this rule, unless officials can clearly establish that to do so would present a danger to the person or other persons in custody, transgender men should be housed in men's facilities and transgender women in women's facilities. And where people cannot be housed consistent with their gender identity, then the only reasonable alternative we propose is to house transgender women in units with other women who are housed in the men's facility. The staff in these women's units within men's facilities should be appropriately trained on issues concerning the health and safety needs of transgender and gender nonconforming persons in custody. And it is important to note that wherever transgender people are housed, they must have access to the same programs and services as all prisoners in that facility. We believe that strengthening the rules in this way would make a real difference, and we urge the Board to seize this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Harris? Harris or Harris?
Harris.
Oh, Harris.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Beth Harris, and I'm a senior staff attorney with the New York Civil Liberties Union. The New York Civil Liberties Union welcomes the Board's efforts to adopt the standards promulgated under the Prison Rape Elimination Act. But to echo the public advocate, the adoption of these regulations is an important first step, but it is important to recognize that the PRIA regulation set a national baseline for preventing and addressing sexual abuse and violence. The Board must ensure that the final rules are implemented in a manner that reflects and fully considers the particular structure of doc facilities, how staff and inmates interact within those facilities, and existing policies and procedures. Specifically, the New York Civil Liberties Union urges improvements to the proposed data collection and reporting rules. We testify in support of the Board's position that it should retain the transgender housing unit, and urges modifications to the proposed rules to protect LGBT, gender nonconforming, and intersex prisoners. And we strongly endorse, consistent with the written testimony of the Legal Aid Society, amendments to the proposed regulations to ensure that the investigation of sexual abuse allegations is independent and fair, and does not penalize the victim. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about our recommendations in the area of data collection and reporting. We strongly support Proposed Rule Section 540, which requires semi-annual reporting and the public availability of that reporting on the Department's website. However, we do strongly urge the inclusion of additional categories of information in order to ensure that there is a full picture of where improvements and changes are needed, taking into account those specific areas where the data has traditionally been under-inclusive. So in addition to gender, which is already included in the rule, we would propose that the Board should add race, ethnicity, age, disability, immigration status, sexual orientation, and gender identity, if those are known. Data relating to the number of substantiated, unsubstantiated, unfounded allegations should be disaggregated by the above-listed categories of identity. The data should be reported on a number of staff who have reported observing sexual abuse, and those who have been disciplined for failing to make such reports. This is essential to ensure that staff training on reporting sexual abuse is implemented and effective. And finally, the Department should also be required to report on the number of staff who are alleged to have engaged in sexual abuse, and the number of staff who have been the subject of one or more sexual abuse allegations. This is essential to help identify officers who require and discipline. In the area of LGBT and gender nonconforming and intersex prisoners in doc custody, we strongly support the proposed rules that implement PRIA standards to provide this group of people, this particularly vulnerable group of people, with additional protections. However, to echo some of what my colleagues at the Legal Aid Society have said and others earlier today, the final rules should make it explicit that transgender people should be housed consistent with their gender identity. This is both consistent with PRIA guidelines and is required by the principles of equality and dignity that we have enshrined in our state and our city human rights law. Exceptions should be made where an individual feels they will not be safe within the facility consistent with their gender identity. Nevertheless, given the current reality of where many trans people are currently housed, we support the continued use of the voluntary housing area for transgender female prisoners confined in male facilities. We do not believe that this violates PRIA. This is a voluntary decision by people to be there. It is not simply, "You are transgender. We're putting you into this facility." And it also simply can be viewed as a female unit within a male facility. So we believe that regardless of what the PRIA standard 115.42 requires, that the THU should be retained. It is simply an essential option for transgender women, most of whom would be subjected to the threat of severe harassment and violence if they were housed in facilities with men. So we believe that an affirmative statement mandating the existence of the THU should be added, along with requirements for training THU staff on how to address the needs of transgender prisoners, and ensuring that people in the THU have access to the same programming as other people who are incarcerated in those facilities. And finally, and we will submit more detailed written comments, I just want to echo what my colleague Dory Lewis said at the Legal Aid Society, that the Department cannot, consistent with concepts of fundamental fairness, investigate allegations of sexual abuse brought against its own employees or staff, or simply involving its own staff. An independent agency must investigate those allegations. Thank you so much for your time.
Erin?
Yes?
Just real quick, you suggested that you're going to submit?
We will be submitting. We have not as of yet.
Okay.
But we will be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Thank you for holding this hearing. On behalf of COBA, I appreciate the opportunity to address this rulemaking process. The Board proposes to create a new chapter of its rule containing minimum standards that are designed to detect, prevent, and respond to sexual abuse and sexual harassment of persons incarcerated in jails and other facilities operated by the Department. COBA applauds the Board for finally making the Department comply with national standards, just as COBA forced the Department to meet responsibilities under the state's workplace violence law. While COBA will be submitting written comments on this complex issue, we have two boards, two points for the Board to think about in adopting standards about sexual abuse and harassment of those who find themselves in the city's jails. While the Board addresses this problem, it can also set right a long-running problem that afflicts workers in the Department. You may not know this, but close to 60% of the members of COBA are women. They are mothers, daughters, sisters. So imagine one of your relatives in what I'm saying in the next couple of minutes at the podium. What has long gone missing in this discussion is the sexual harassment and physical assault, and even attempted rape by inmates of female staff in the jails. Make no mistakes, most of these violent incidents and acts of harassment are targeted at women because of their gender. This does not only concern correction officers, but the emboldened population of inmates who faced almost no repercussions for their actions. Just today, The Truth newspaper had an article about an incident where an inmate assaulted a female captain. A few weeks ago, an inmate attempted to rape a female correction officer. And the daily inmates shower, the inmates shower the female staff with lewd and degrading comments directed at them based on their agenda, again, while the jails are filled with former convicted offenders of violence against women and convicted sexual predators. If the Board is finally addressing sexual harassment, and worse, in the city's jail, it should also take the opportunity to address this serious matter in terms of how female staff are treated by the inmate population. This should include not merely punitive sanctions, but also sensitivity training and other programs. The second point is very simple: due process. The proposed rules are not only an adaptation of the principles of PRIA. Those principles are value-neutral and protect a very sensitive and fragile population. However, the process of investigating and disciplining staff runs afoul of the collective bargaining law. The City of New York, through rulemaking, cannot change the terms and conditions of bargaining law. The City of New York, through rulemaking, excuse me, conditions of the employment of 9,000 men and women doing good work for the city without bargaining discipline-related rules. Inmates get more process than these proposed rules give the workers in your jails. This is not going to work. We strongly urge the Board to compare the investigation process proposed here with the proposed rules to the process already in use at the Department, and tailor them accordingly. Thank you for your time, and as I said in my opening, we will be submitting more detailed written comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Pope. I'm from the Children's Defense Fund, New York. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Our comments also focus on the placement needs of transgender youth under age 18 in New York City jails, and we support what has already been said here. While DOC currently operates the transgender housing unit, or THU, due to sight and sound restrictions, the THU option is not an appropriate resource for 16- and 17-year-olds in DOC custody. For those young adults in New York City jails who volunteer, we strongly support the continued utilization of THU or a similar unit. It is critical that the lack of access for 16- and 17-year-olds to THU not lead to the isolation or segregation of transgender youth, which is never an acceptable alternative to a lack of safe housing. Confining youth in adult facilities already impedes access to age-appropriate programming and services, many of which are available to those similarly aged who reside in ACS facilities, as was mentioned in previous testimony. We urge the Board to include assurances that 16- and 17-year-olds in DOC custody be housed based on their gender identity, if that is their preference for placement, and that serious consideration and respect be shown to youth's understanding of their own safety. Lastly, we would appreciate further clarity on how the Board will define and monitor whether the placement would present management or security problems, as listed in Section 518, titled "Use of Screening Information," to ensure that transgender youth and young adults are not being unjustly denied their basic human dignity. Thank you again.
Thank you. [applause]
Hi. I'm from the Sylvia Rivera Law Project and a member of the Jails Action Coalition. We are attempting to submit our comments now, so you'll get them hopefully by the end of today. In order to sort of place my comments, I just want to share that Sylvia Rivera Law Project is an organization that works with transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex New Yorkers. We work with people who are incarcerated in the New York City jails, and with people who are incarcerated in New York State. Staff from SRLP provide legal and cultural programming twice a month to individuals who are housed in the transgender housing unit, in addition to providing them with direct legal services. Since August of last year, we estimate that we've worked with about 50 transgender people in the New York City jail system. And I'm just going to only comment specifically about transgender housing concerns, although our comments, when you get them, will be more significant. I do want to start by saying that we had some concerns about this whole, the rulemaking process. We were able to visit individuals on the transgender housing unit on July 8th and 22nd, and in order to enter the transgender housing unit, we need to go through the council visit at MDC, through security, past medical, up an elevator, across the passageway, up another elevator, through a hallway, and into the unit. In no time along that entire passage, either time that we visited, July 8th or July 22nd, did we see a single mention of this public hearing. There's also no mention in the unit itself. And the people who are in the transgender housing unit are technically in general population, however, they never leave the unit without an escort. They don't go to the law library without an escort. They don't go to recreation without an escort. They don't go to program without an escort. Most people do not ever leave the transgender housing unit. They had no information about this hearing was happening. We provided them with significant information, and they have submitted testimonies, which will be read by some Sylvia Rivera Law Project staff members later, but no one who was actually inside, who was going to be significantly affected by this, had noticed. And that's really concerning, because they're the people who are most able to tell you what they need to feel safe. That said, I think that it's really important to note that SRLP maintains that the national PRIA standards do actually allow for a voluntary transgender housing unit. I'm aware that the Department of Justice is saying that they don't, but that's not how they read, and it's inconceivable that something that we know is ending prison rape should not be allowed because of the Prison Rape Elimination Act. That doesn't make any sense. We have had no, we have had no reports from people who are actually inside the transgender housing unit of sexual violence while they are housed in the transgender housing unit. Every single person who was housed outside the transgender housing unit, who was a transgender identified individual, has reported sexual violence to us. So we know it is stopping rape and sexual violence for people in the transgender housing unit. There is no question of that. What's also very important to note is that we know that the staff who are the steady officers in the transgender housing unit undergo very intensive training around pronoun usage, around correct pat frisks, around inappropriate questions to ask people. And we know that those things do not happen for people who are outside the transgender housing unit, and we know that those things do not happen when the steady officers leave the transgender housing unit and a replacement officer comes in. We consistently hear from people in the transgender housing unit that when the steady officers are not present, they get called the wrong pronoun, they get pat frisked inappropriately, they get asked questions like, "What do you have in your pants?" They get called really derogatory names. And these are all the basis, these are warning signs of sexual violence. And I think that's one of the very important things that we talk about when we talk about the Prison Rape Elimination Act, is that we're talking about eliminating it, not necessarily after the fact. So we're talking about addressing a culture where people are seen as being disposable, where people are seen as not mattering, and where people's basic human rights and dignity are completely done away with. And I think I just want to echo what has been said by many individuals here, that it is inconceivable that your gender identity, that the New York City Commission on Human Rights recognizes as being an inherent part of your dignity outside of the jail, would all of a sudden stop because you've been accused of a crime. You're not even convicted yet. So I just, it would bring the Department of Corrections into moral and ethical standards with the city. Thank you.
Nick, I just want to respond on the issues you discussed in terms of posting in the jails. So everything should have been posted by July 22nd. In addition, we created an entire, so, yes. And we created an entirely new method for people who can't leave the jails to come here and attend this hearing, to leave messages which we transcribe automatically, which will then be a part of the public comment. So that's never been done before by the Board, and we think that'll be a really efficient way to hear from people who can't attend in person here.
How are they informed of that?
They're informed of that in these postings that are supposed to be all over the jails. It's also why we extended the public comment period until August 31st.
Juanita Peralta.
Yeah, luckily, it is our same number, and now there's just a new prompt where you can choose to, and then you leave a message regarding PRIA, and we transcribe it automatically as a part of the public record. And it's announced when you call that you'll be leaving a message that will be entered into the public record.
Thanks. I just want to say a quick, there's a lot of heavy and traumatizing stuff being said, and I want to say to the survivors in the room, the survivors of sexual violence, the survivors of incarceration, which we know is another form of violence, the survivors of both, that we see you, even though the DOC is in here, like, we see you and we hear you. So my name's Susan. I'm a legal intern, also with the Sylvia Rivera Law Project, and several of us are going to read testimonies that were mailed to SRLP by trans- of us are going to read testimonies that were mailed to SRLP by trans women who are currently incarcerated in the New York State prison system and who've spent time, who've gone through the New York City jails. I think it's important to hear from people who will be directly affected by the proposed rules, who know best how to prevent sexual violence in jail, and who cannot be here with us today. And some of them include experiences that happened in the New York City prisons, but we know that they speak to problems and a culture that our members know is pervasive across those systems. So this is testimony from a woman named Alicia Cohen, who's a white 27-year-old trans woman. "I've been incarcerated in New York since 2008, and the treatment of transgender prisoners has gotten better, but we still do not have full equal rights. The best thing, the biggest thing is the use of the double-edged sword of PRIA. PRIA is being used to make transgender prisoners' time harder than it already is. I was raped by three other inmates in 2011. After that moment, I suppressed what happened to me until four years later, when I was in a support group, and I remembered what happened. I became very depressed, and I relapsed into addiction. Last year in 2015, I had a disciplinary hearing for drug use. I told the hearing officer what happened to me. I had never reported the rape, but the hearing officer did report it because of PRIA. Later that week, I was on a transfer bus. They pulled me off the bus, they sat me in a room where I was questioned for an hour about the rape. It was like I was the criminal, that I had done something wrong. Then I was placed back on the bus. They took no consideration for my feelings or my safety, and if someone's going to do an investigation, they should be trained on how to deal with victims of sexual abuse. The reality of prison life for transgender women is this: when you come into prison, you're forced to find a man, or become used, or passed around, or even sell yourself if you know how to. When you come into prison, as soon as you get off the bus, the word is already spread, the new girl has come in. Inevitably, boys start to make their moves, and you have a choice. You can pick a man, hopefully one that will treat you right, and more importantly, keep others away, or you can pick, you cannot pick anybody, and that leaves you open to sexual abuse. Of course, there's the protective custody route, but that is the same thing as being in solitary. You sign in to be locked down for 20 hours, 24 hours a day, for at least 90 days, and then you go on to the next facility where it starts all over again. Also, being in PC prevents you from going to your programs, both mandatory and volunteer, so that when you go to the parole board, there's nothing to help you get out. Most trans women, including myself, choose a man to protect us and take care of us, and because of this, you get slips dropped on you, which are notes to the administration about illegal activity. Once the slip is dropped saying that you have a sexual relationship, there is an investigation because of PRIA. Most likely, the administration won't find anything, but for your safety, you'll have to go into PC. They use PRIA to force us into IPC, to PC, and the SHU. And what's the solution? One is to have LGBTQ housing that allow people to do everything that the general population does. Also, to have support groups, to help build self-esteem and a safe place for LGBTQ people to talk, so they don't feel like they have to resort to drugs or sex as a coping mechanism. Also, there's the harassment and discrimination that happens every day. There is not enough paper to describe what staff do to us every day. If you write up a staff member, it only leads to more harassment. I think all staff members should have to take LGBTQ sensitivity training taught by a professional, not someone who knows nothing about LGBTQ people and just read from a manual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anya. I'm also an intern at the Sylvia Rivera Law Project, and I'll be reading two more pieces of testimony from currently incarcerated trans women. The first is by Asha Daya, who is a 27-year-old trans woman. "Here, the prisons are very out of control. We are not liked by the COs. They have it out for us just because we're trans or gay. These COs here are racist, and all they want to do is put their hands on us. They try to make us theirs, but my girls that I spend time with in the yard, we stand with each other. That's what you ladies have to do, because you really just have you and your sisters. These officers will disrespect your preferred gender pronouns. They will put you in a house where you can get dumped. It's a setup. Those officers don't care. You only have a few of them that try to help us out in Rikers, mostly the females. They try their best to help the girls out, not all of them, but most of them. The NYC jails need training on how to handle us, because they have no idea. Well, some do, but they don't give a fuck, because they don't get in trouble. That's why they do it. The COs are not here for us. We're on our own. That's why we stick with our family, which is the LGBT. Some of us are making an LGBT organization family in jail or prison to keep us safe. The help we get is only from places like Sylvia Rivera Law Project and New Alternatives. I would like for the NYC jails to respect our preferred gender pronouns. I would also like for them to search us not in front of all the inmates. We're trans, we should not be undressing in front of inmates or other COs. I'm here at Attica, and they do that a lot to us. And I would like for them to stop calling us faggots. We have a name, and faggot is not it. And they need to help us more with getting our bras and underwear and hormones." The next testimony is by Sasha Augustine, who's a Black and Hispanic trans woman surviving in the New York prison system. "The way we transgender women are treated in prison is wrong and cruel. Not only do we deal with being raped by other inmates, but the correction officers too. We are seen as sexual objects, not people with feelings. From experience, I have been sexually assaulted by a sergeant and a CO. I did not know how to react, because they have the power to ruin my bid by setting me up with a weapon. All I could do was endure the abuse physically and verbally. And without physical evidence, it's their word against mine. I've never been raped, but I have been molested by a sergeant and an officer, and I felt disgusted and also weak, because I'm a minority in prison. I believe that prisons need to have a facility where trans women can be placed without putting us in SHU or PC. To be around male officers and inmates is cruel, a cruel and unusual punishment, because we are females. Facilities need to offer programs for LGBTQ inmates, so that we can discuss issues amongst ourselves. I know that NYC prisons don't allow trans women to receive feminine articles, bras, makeup, panties, et cetera, through packages or commissary. We should be allowed that. We identify as females, and that's how we need to be treated, not like sexual objects. I've personally been through all kinds of abuse, from rude and derogatory comments to being sexually molested. It's a crime how many of us trans women are raped or harassed, and if we say something, we are segregated and placed in SHU. So that's why we don't say anything. We just endure it. I've been discriminated against receiving a job I wanted, or a facility I felt more comfortable being placed in. I have been violated by a CO and a sergeant. They grabbed, kissed, and touched me, and it's even more difficult, because I'm the only trans woman in some of the prisons I've been in. I think that it's best that we have trans housing on Rikers and in New York State prisons. It's a benefit for us trans women to be around each other and not isolated. Some of us who don't have family during incarceration, our trans community helps one another. I would also like the medical departments to be more respectful and helpful with our medical treatment, including HRT. Thank you."
Thank you. Cleo Jones?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I turn around, and I look at the Board, and I think the shame of it is, it would be nice. See, I'm from the generation where we were actually called transvestites, drag queens, and degraded when you went to jail or prison. And the thing, what I say about this hearing, it's good that you have this hearing, and even the people that are out here testemoning, I see most of the women from these organizations, and one particular guy that advocated more or less for the women. But I will say, within this system, this whole correction system, this has been going on for over 400 years. Now, it's getting to the point, the way I see things now, with all the killing and all this that's going on in the world, it's going to come to a boil. I mean, I'm from the generation where Attica and all of that blew up, and it's going to say a lot about this society in terms of the presidents that we're getting in this administration now, coming after Obama steps out. And it's going to say a lot about this particular country. And I will say it in terms of this here, I think that the justice system has to be revamped. It has to be, because this has been going on for so long. And again, I will say like here, the tragedy of it is, we don't actually see any of the victims here. None of them. You see other people from organizations testifying, which is good. So that's basically should tell you something as the Board within itself, something to think about, because trust and believe, all of this is just a matter of time before the pressure really explodes. And what would this country look like? Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Carolina Rivas?
Hi, my name is Carolina Rivas. I'm also an intern at the Sylvia Rivera Law Project, and I'll be reading two testimonies. The first one is Terrianna Witherspoon. She is a 33-year-old mixed-race trans woman who is incarcerated in the New York City prison system and has been in New York City jails. This is her testimony. "I want my testimony to be shared, because I am a strong trans woman of color, who believes in taking a stand for trans women all over. I believe in sisterhood and in brotherhood, and that we should stick together as one. The treatment of transgender people in New York prisons and jails is extremely horrible on so many levels. The correctional officers, both male and female, refer to us trans women using he/him and not she/her pronouns. The state trains officers to address transgender inmates according to their gender identities, but officers totally disregard what they have been taught. I feel as though the prison systems are aware of the population of the transgender community that is incarcerated, but ignore the fact that we have rights when it comes to the system, doing anything about retraining these officers to be more open-minded and to not look down on transgender inmates. The facility needs more than just retraining. It needs to stop ostracizing and discriminating against trans people. As a trans woman in the prison system, I have experienced being harassed, discriminated against, and ostracized while being incarcerated, not just by the COs, but by the inmates as well. I feel that the COs are not doing their job to prevent any kind of punishment to the inmates that are committing these hateful acts. In closing, I want to say that the prison system needs to reach out to the transgender inmates on a regular basis to find out ways to get the officers and staff to use the correct gender markers. I feel that all prisons should have a housing unit for trans people, as well as products available, so that trans women can keep up their feminine appearance." And this testimony is by Diamond. She is an African-American trans woman who is 40 years old. She's incarcerated in the New York State prison system and has spent time in New York City jails, including, and has been in the transgender housing unit. "In some jails, trans people are discriminated against. The program committee will give a trans person a job, but staff will not call them to work, or will tell them, 'Oh, we don't need you.' I was raped while I was in protective custody by a person in the general population. I reported it, and he was written a misbehavior report, but it was dismissed, even though DNA evidence was collected. Nothing was done to him, and I never saw a therapist about it. The IG was very disrespectful, and they did not believe me. I feel like it sends a message that it's all right to get raped, and reporting crimes is pointless. Staff should not discriminate against trans and gay people, and we should be allowed to work anywhere in the jail. If a sexual assault is reported and evidence is collected, then everything should be done to prosecute the perpetrator. Just because they have a good disciplinary record does not mean that they are not capable of rape. Also, people who report rape should receive counseling as well as advocacy. Last, CEO, female CEOs should be the only ones who conduct pat frisk on trans people with breasts. Thank you."
So, I know it's been a long afternoon, but really quite fruitful and valuable to the Board. I've been asked by one of the remaining speakers, there are about six or seven left, if they could move up because they have to leave. I'm going to call the names of the five people who are in front of that individual, and if any of them object or need to leave themselves, I will call them first. So here are the names, and if you can, the next would be Barbara Hamilton, followed by Jennifer Parish, Rachel Weiner, Caitlin Hanson, perhaps? And I'll give the last name of the next individual, I think it's Brumdick, I can't really make out the first name. If it's all right with you, that group that I just mentioned, I would call the next person and allow her to speak for her four minutes, and then go back to the order. But it's really up to you. If there's no objection, that's what I'm going to do. We're a very flexible body here. All right, then, I'm going to let, I appreciate that, thank you. Brittany Knapp?
Hello, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Brittany Knapp, and I'm a member of the Jails Action Coalition, an artist for the movement, an art therapist who works with formerly incarcerated individuals, and a survivor of sexual, institutional sexual abuse as an adolescent. For years, society has accepted rape as a fact of life in jails, and women are especially at risk. We know that a staggering number of incarcerated women have experienced sexual abuse as children and as adults prior to incarceration. The prison environment leaves women especially vulnerable to staff sexual abuse, as they rely on them to meet their basic needs. Many women will not report due to fear of retaliation and as a result of feelings of learned helplessness from a lifetime of abuse. Safe and effective methods of reporting abuse have not been provided for them, as well as the same appropriate interventions and treatments available to survivors outside of jails. Incarcerated women are often perceived as bad or the other by society, and by failing to provide them with safety, preventative measures, interventions, resources, and justice, we send the message that their bodies do not have the same integrity and worth of women outside of jails. We invalidate the significance of their painful experience and allow an already vulnerable population to be revictimized. Of all of my painful experiences while incarcerated, my rape by a staff person was the most difficult to overcome, because the social and judicial systems did not respond and validate my experience, leading to self-blame, shame, a decreased sense of self-worth, and depression and suicidality. Really, the investigation and the interrogation and the lack of accountability on the part of the staff that abused me as a juvenile in the juvenile justice system was really a second rape in its own way, and has really made it difficult to heal, even as an adult and as a therapist and clinician now. I urge the Board to do everything in their power to ensure the prevention, intervention, and response to sexual abuse in New York City jails, and protect this at-risk population, and acknowledge the integrity and value of incarcerated women's bodies and experiences. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you. Barbara Hamilton?
Hi, good afternoon to the members of the Board. I'm Barbara Hamilton from the Legal Aid Society, and I'm here to testify on behalf of MB, a woman who's incarcerated as Rose M. Singer. I should also note for the Board that I'm also counsel to Jane Doe 1 and Jane Doe 2, whose excerpts were read here today. I cannot be here today, because I'm locked up right now, but I wanted to share my story, so I can try to do my part to help end the sexual abuse and harassment that the women at RMSC constantly experience. I also asked Barbara to keep my name private while I'm locked up, because I'm afraid of being labeled as a snitch. I think the Board should pass rules to prevent sex abuse and harassment of inmates at Rikers. The Board has to help the women at Rosie's and Rikers, because we are treated very bad here. I've been locked up at Rosie's a lot of times because of drug abuse and parole violations. I also have severe mental health issues. At Rosie's, they treat the women very badly, especially if you have mental health problems. Here, you're just considered another MO. And it's hard to complain about the stuff that goes on, especially sex abuse. For me, I can barely read or write, and have a hard time getting anyone to help me file anything. Not that I think it would do much good. When I was locked up in 2015, I complained about an officer sexually harassing me, and everyone in the jail found out and called me a snitch and a crackhead. And nothing happened to the officer, as far as I know. I was the one treated like I did something wrong for complaining. I never heard anything about my complaint- I never heard anything about my complaint from the people who came to investigate, and that was over a year ago. I was eight months pregnant, and an officer used to insist that I show him my breasts and my private areas when I was locked in my cell. He would come to my cell all of the time and tell me things like, quote, "You know what time it is," end quote, quote, "You used to have a fat ass," end quote. I tried to even cover my cell window, and the officer complained to the area captain. I didn't want to get in trouble and be sent to the bin eight months pregnant, so I took the paper off my cell window. It got to the point where the CO was coming to my cell sometimes three to four times a night. He gave me a bottle of lotion once because he said that my skin was, quote, "ashy." I was worried that things might get even more out of hand with the CO, so I complained. It made things worse for me in the jail. I was labeled as a snitch for trying to tell on the officer. During other times I was at Rosie's, I know that other female inmates were messing with officers to get drugs if they were addicts. Some women were so desperate for stuff like food and sanitary items, they would also mess with officers to get it. I messed with officers sometimes too, because I had nothing and no one to send me commissary items. It is normal for jail that these things go on, and the officers have all of the power, and we inmates aren't even treated like we are human. Another time I was at Rikers years ago, I was able to get on the inmate work detail where you get to clean up outside the jail. I did this because I was able to pick up cigarette butts from the ground and keep them to smoke, because in exchange, I gave oral sex to an officer in charge of the work detail. I know some of the other women were doing the same thing too with the officers, so they could go outside and get cigarette butts to smoke. I want the BOC to help pass rules and make changes. We should not be treated that way and should at least be treated like human beings. I do not want to feel like I have to get on my knees and do sexual favors for COs because it's the only way to survive in jail. People should take our complaints seriously and not call us snitches for not wanting to be harassed or sexually abused by the CO, or surviving in jail the only way that you can there. Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts on how your client could have been protected in this snitch issue? I mean, Legal Aid mentioned supervision, do you have any thoughts on what mechanisms could be established to protect people when they make complaints that are not in the rule?
I believe my colleague has testified on behalf of Legal Aid, so therefore I cannot extensively comment. I can say specific to this situation that the investigation was done out in the open and that the investigators went to the housing area and started openly asking questions in addition to the beauty shop. There was nothing done to protect this individual's privacy, and so what was not in this statement, and then I'm able, you know, to tell her story and share, is that when she went down to the beauty shop, she was threatened by other inmates, and they basically told her, "You have these white crackers in here to snitch on our blackmail officers." So, mechanisms that I would suggest based on this, or that I think this individual, MB, would be very interested in is take an account of privacy, do with her investigation, don't just go ask several questions and then drop the person as not credible, follow up with them, let them know what's going on, do a follow-up interview. None of these things were done here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Parrish. I am the Director of Criminal Justice Advocacy at the Urban Justice Center Mental Health Project, and I'm a member of the Jails Action Coalition. The Jails Action Coalition will be submitting to the board our recommendations for strengthening the proposed rules. We appreciate that you've engaged in this rulemaking process and that you have gone farther in some areas in PRIA, and we think that the rules could be further strengthened. So, we will be submitting those recommendations to you. Our recommendations are signed on to by over 40 organizations and dozens of individuals. And I won't spend time going through those recommendations because many of them have already been spoken of by my colleagues, but I do want to highlight my concern by the Department of Corrections' presentation to you, specifically that they would say that your timeframes are too accelerated. Quite frankly, when I read the proposed rule, I thought they were quite extended, given the fact that it's taken us more than a year and three months to get to this position since the public advocate made her petition. We didn't have these hearings until today. So, they have known that this is an issue that needs to be addressed for quite some time. They had the Moss Group report more than a year ago, so the thought that this needs to be put off and somehow will be an unbalanced set of priorities, I think is very concerning that they're not taking this issue more seriously, especially considering all the information that's been presented today. So, I hope you will remain firm in your timeframes, and also that you will remain firm in the reporting requirements, because that's essential, that the Department of Correction report in all the areas that you've outlined in the proposed rules. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Rachel Weiner, and I'm co-president of the Fordham Law Advocates for the Incarcerated, a legal intern at the Urban Justice Center, and a member of the Jails Action Coalition. Before attending law school, I was an investigator for the Department of Corrections Investigation Division for two years. While at ID, I had investigated many instances of inmate-on inmate and occasionally staff-on-inmate sexual assault and harassment. And I'd like to speak today about the inefficiencies of the current investigative process and changes I hope the board will consider before enacting their proposed rules. First, the training procedure at ID needs to be overhauled and updated. Compared to the 40-hour victim assistance training course required by New York State, my ID training consisted of watching a four-hour-long video of an apathetically presented talk by the Moss Group on investigating instances of rape, which was devoid of any practical application to DOC. This video is still the standard training at ID, this four-hour video, and it's completely unacceptable. Training should be provided by a board-approved outside agency, consistent with other law enforcement agency standards, and should include topics like effective and sensitive victim interviewing and the official protocol of DOC and its relation to outside agencies. If DOC can provide shotgun training for its correction officers, it can certainly provide a basic rape crisis training to its investigators. If investigations, secondly, if investigations are not referred to an outside agency, only civilian investigators who have received this requisite training should respond to and investigate claims of sexual abuse, and this is for two reasons. First, the individual making the allegation must be protected from the perpetrator and their contacts. There's always a risk that a correction officer, investigator, or a COI will have a relationship with the officer against whom the allegation is made. Second, those making allegations must be treated with respect, and their complaints presume true until an investigation concludes otherwise. While there are some perfectly respectful COIs, I've seen how challenging it is for uniformed members of staff to remove their biases when it comes to allegations of sexual assault. I've seen COIs text on their phones throughout their interviews, roll their eyes in disbelief to the complainant's face, and refer to a transgender woman as "it" during the entire interview, and continue to make transphobic jokes about her to other COs in the area. In fact, I was once assigned to respond to an allegation of inmate-on inmate sexual abuse. The allegation had an uncertain timeline and was a relatively innocuous complaint. The COI responded to the case with immediately scoffed in disbelief, but after spending a total of four straight days looking at weeks' worth of video, I found a trend of severe sexual abuse that the complainant was exposed to while he was unconscious and therefore was unaware of. My COI, my co-investigator, it's safe to say, would not have done the same thorough investigation. This disrespect, carelessness, and potential for retaliation cannot be risked by insisting COIs investigate these claims of abuse. Third, I commend the board's necessary insistence of higher standards for investigating sexual assault allegations, and the board should allow these standards to be upheld by ensuring that DOC has enough investigators to carry the added load. There are currently five civilian investigators, three COIs on the PRIA team, as it's known. ID intends to expand that number from eight investigators to 12, but this is still severely inefficient to meet the investigative standards set by the board. Compared to the 302 complaints received by ID in 2015, so far in 2016, in just six months, ID has received over 400 complaints. While receiving roughly three cases a month and insisting their closure within 90 days is reasonable, it's really impossible to ask this on top of the 20 to 30 cases investigators are already backlog logged with. DOC's staffing plan must include the staffing of a sufficient number of civilian investigators to investigate these allegations, and they should be hired as quickly as possible. The number of positions should be determined with consideration to the number of allegations received, the number of open investigations, and the average time it takes to conclude them. If DOC can fund $1.2 million of investment for military-grade weaponry, they can afford to hire a few more civilian investigators and provide victims with the treatment they deserve. Again, I thank the board for proposing these role changes. The department has the opportunity to set the standard for city jails throughout the nation. It's imperative this opportunity is not squandered by ignoring the details necessary to make the change. Thank you very much.
Could you talk to the sort of culture of the investigative department, investigative body? What's the culture around this kind of investigation, sexual assault? And will the rules that we are proposing address that aspect of...
I mean, I would argue with the proposed asks that I just suggested, maybe it would change the culture. I do, like I mentioned just now, I think COIs generally are more or less the problems of most of the issues I have with the investigative process. I think a lot of them can be a little bit, I'll say cold is a nice word to put it, dismissive of a lot of complaints and allegations, which again breeds a lot of issues. And I do agree, or I do, like I mentioned already, think that COIs do have some connection, whether or not it's spoken about or not, with the officers that are the subject of these allegations. I really do think change needs to be made. Civilian investigators I have seen more often than not are significantly more respectful, more sensitive to ways that victims should be spoken to, treated, things like that. Yeah, and also, I mean, the investigators weren't effectively trained for how to deal with these cases. I've undergone the, twice actually, this 40-hour victim assistance training. I'm a licensed victim advocate for rape and sexual assault, and comparably, as someone who is interested in this topic, this four-hour training video left me bored and confused. So, I can only imagine someone who doesn't care about these issues looking at that training and what they would have taken away, if anything, from it. So, yeah, no problem.
Did you have a question?
We thought about training, and I can't remember what we ended up with. We were concerned and wanted some standard that was equivalent to training of others. Do you have any experience in terms of investigations ending prior to determinations relative to an officer quitting the job, for example, or being offered some negotiation in the process rather than completing investigations?
I, well, personally, well, ID generally doesn't field as many of the staff-on inmate, or, yeah, staff-on inmate allegations, so I can't really speak as much to that. I have no experience, I have one actually that I can think of where an inmate recanted an allegation, but that's really all I can think of.
No, I meant where investigation of an officer was ended.
Yeah, no, that I'm not familiar with.
That's probably why the question should be a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caitlin Hanson, I think that's right.
Good afternoon, I am a legal advocate at the Urban Justice Center's Mental Health Project and also a member of the Jails Action Coalition. I am here today because I was asked to read a letter from Mr. Larry McNair, who is a man who was previously incarcerated on Rikers. On February 19th, 2015, while being processed at the Anna M. Cross Center intake, I was sodomized by three officers that claimed a body x-ray machine exhibited contraband in my rectum. They never found any contraband to support that claim, but sodomized me in an attempt to disclose contraband with their dirty, ungloved fingers, where I contracted the sexual disease known as syphilis. This matter is pending in the Southern District Court. As if that was not enough cruel and unusual punishment, when I protested, they used undue and unnecessary excessive use of force, knocking two teeth out of my mouth. These officers still have their jobs, and no one has been reprimanded and/or criminally charged with rape. They have not been, they have not made any attempts to compensate me for my physical, emotional, or moral injuries. The New York City Board of Correction needs to make severe penalties on officers that conduct themselves in cavity searches that warrant the supervision of captains and deputy wardens of the facility. Because I was only being charged with a misdemeanor at that time, I was not supposed to be strip-surged nor was I an immediate threat to the function of the facility by disturbance or otherwise. Who is going to do anything now that you know you can obtain my Second Amendment complaint via District Court with all medical exhibits in support of my claims? The officer refuses to turn over his medical records to determine if he has syphilis. My hope is to go to trial and expose this type of inhumane treatment of myself and future detainees. My hope is that the Board of Correction comes to my aid in recovery of this heinous act that no human should have to endure. Those officers need to register as sex offenders for this type of misconduct. Medical records will reveal that there is truth in my allegations, and the nightmares still haunt me and have affected my ability to trust correction officers who break the law themselves. I am going to need mental health therapy for the rest of my life to remain emotionally stable. I honestly do appreciate the board hearing my claims, and hopes that you will create a policy that deters this type of behavior by your staff members. There should be criminal charges brought against officers that sexually assault and abuse inmates. I would like to thank you for hearing my voice and hope that this message will secure the safety of all inmates who are victims of sexual abuse in our jail system. You should implement the use of body cameras during intake searches to protect inmates who have not, who have not or have been convicted of a crime. If you cannot truly comprehend the seriousness of my message and my experience, just imagine of someone who is supposed to protect you, holds you down when someone other than a medical doctor sticks their dirty, ungloved, contaminated fingers in your rectum against your will. I anticipate and await your help as a victim of sexual assault. Thank you, and God bless all of you. I remain sincerely yours, Larry McNair.
I think the name of the next speaker is, last name is Gromdick, do I have that right?
I read it Grandichelle.
Close, she's better, she reads better than I do.
Nina.
Tell us also the pronunciation of the last name.
I'm Grant Chelly. I'm with Sylvia Rivera Law Project as a President Advisory Committee member and a Movement Building Team member, as well as one of the Movement Building Team leaders. I also work with Jails Action Coalition, and I am a survivor of sexual assault and rape on Rikers Island. I've spoke in front of this board before, and we're just getting to the part where Corrections decides that they're now going to implement the PRIA Act from 2003. I was one of the ones instrumental in adding and helping get trans people and trans women added to the PRIA Act, as well as more in-depth coverage on the Prison Rape Elimination Act. What I'm finding now is that they blatantly violated federal law and federal rules when that came out in 2003, because the Attorney General of the United States back then specifically said that all county, city, and federal jails had exactly one year from the time it come out and became law in 2003 to comply. It is now 2015, and they're still coming out with, in my opinion, and pardon my French when I say this, half-assed PRIA rules. I think that what they've come out with nowhere in-depth covers what the federal PRIA Act covers. It didn't protect me in 2014 through 2015. If they had implemented it when they should have, it could have. But as they all say, "If was a fifth." But as they all say, if was a fifth, it didn't protect me. I still live with those memories. And I know every survivor that was read here, whose testimony was read here today, still live with those, not only memories, but nightmares. As far as trusting correction officers to do an investigation, not me. From firsthand experience, if it wasn't for one good, or depth of security at another facility, because they wanted to get me out of the one that I was in, to avoid the investigation, it would have never got reported. They would have covered it up. That's how it goes on the island. You talk, you get retaliated against, you get assaulted, you get thrown in solitary. It's a game to them. It's a game that causes us trauma for the rest of our lives. It's a game that should have never even been started, let alone playing, and still being played out, not with just trans women on the island, women on the island, men on the island, but the visitors that come on the island. It's ridiculous that we're supposed to sit here and abide by the comments that I heard the Board of Corrections make, and then, they want to come to these meetings, but they don't want to sit through the full meeting to hear from a survivor if they're in the room, or hear the testimony of survivors. They want to just get up and walk out, because they can't take the stories. They give you excuses, in my book, of why they haven't complied, and why, why can't we have a deadline? Deadlines are way past for them. They had a year to do it, and they didn't do it. Outside agencies are the ones that should be doing the investigation, the evidence collecting, and rape counselors from external should be allowed on the island to talk to us. I came off the island with no rape counselor. I had to get my rape counseling when I came off the island. You know what that feels like? Neither do those correction officials. All they've had is nothing but excuses. And I'm asking the board to make sure that these Pria rules are extensive. Not just what you've heard today, but also completely across the board what federal standards say they should be. Don't allow Rikers investigators to collect the evidence. IG's office should be involved. DOI and law enforcement officials outside. Thank you.
My name is Barbara McLean, and I am a rain speaker, as well as the founder and executive director of VIA Community Services. And I'm also a trained rape-trauma advocate. And it's time for us to end the hypocrisy. There is a clear mandate before us. It is time to make vital changes to the system at Rikers Island and throughout the criminal justice system. When society deems it necessary to incarcerate people for the way their actions adversely affected others, but refuses to punish others who harmed them, it sends the wrong message. There should be no doubt that the time has come for a complete overhaul in the criminal justice system, but especially in the way the cases of sexual assault are processed. There are factors that need to be acknowledged in every single rape case. First, the survivor must be believed. The days where it's acceptable practice to think that a survivor let it happen or cried rape in order to get attention, that must end. Second, it's time that the medical field and law enforcement recognizes that a survivor's body is an active crime scene, and that time and procedures that are taken to perform the rape kit also cause residual trauma. A tertiary reason that law enforcement sees declining crime rates as a positive sign, but actually higher rates of reporting sexual assault and increased outcomes such as convictions are actually strong and positive benchmarks. Finally, it's imperative to assign trained advocates to assist survivors in navigating the combined medical, law enforcement, and judicial systems, and reduce the anxiety concerning the combined processes. It's also time that law enforcement as a whole recognize the findings presented in a Human Rights Watch report, which details the importance of acknowledging that emotional trauma is injurious to the brain. This information could really change how survivors are seen, as well as contributing to the increase in positive outcome for survivors. If survivors are allowed one to three sleep cycles before they give a formal statement to law enforcement, this may seem like it prolongs the process. However, in cities like Philadelphia, Grand Rapids, Kansas City, and San Diego, the opposite has proven true. Let's begin with compassion. Let's support the accusers. This can markedly change the way survivors interact with law enforcement, and let's give survivors, especially incarcerated survivors, the necessary time and respect to process their trauma before being forced to make a formal statement. It's more likely to result in a greater degree of trust in law enforcement and the correction officers, and the criminal justice system at large, and their ability to contribute to justice long-term. And it's not always routine that a prisoner is sexually assaulted, but it's important to acknowledge that factors such as the collection of DNA and the way assigned to the contents of a rape kit often mean that the statement of the survivor can be an afterthought. Law enforcement must work with victims and survivors regardless of their circumstances. If the police work with every victim, offering them respect and deference, and each survivor receives the assistance of an advocate, this will create the safe, non-judgmental environment that needs to be created. Survivors can give their statement and speak their truth, and then and only then will the stigma of intimate partner violence and rape be reduced. These policies are not part of current practice in New York City. Although many advocates are certain that the findings of the Human Rights Watch report should be adopted, many advocates have already adopted these practices in New York City hospitals. And it should be noticed that the practice is gaining strength in some boroughs more rapidly than others. And the findings, which are based on data combined by the Cognitive Neuroscience Society, looked at how the brain was impacted by trauma, and it must rest for at least 24, if not 72 hours before it is exposed to additional trauma, as to mirror the current concussion protocol. And beyond that, it's time that New York City revisits its current treatment of sexual assault. We should hearken back to a time when New York City established the very standards of how sexual assault was treated and adjudicated in the United States. These standards should be extended to all of its citizens, especially those who are most vulnerable due to incarceration and detention. Thank you.
Pastor Cabru, I think that is.
I think I have her. Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Melissa Questonberry. I'm here representing the National Organization for Women. I'm a trained rape crisis counselor at Wyckoff Heights Hospital. I'm also a gender violence specialist. I've done a lot of qualitative research in the area. I myself am a survivor of rape, incest, and domestic violence. For those of you that aren't familiar, to build on the topic about trauma and how it affects your brain, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Adverse Childhood Experiences study, it was done by Dr. Vincent Filitti. It began in 1975. He studied over 18,000 subjects to understand the neurological effects on the brain, what trauma does to your brain. So the information we have is based on his studies. I would like to read an excerpt from the United Department of Justice report that was put out by the National Institute of Justice called Sexual Assault Kids: Using Science to Find Solutions. What happens to the brain and body during a sexual assault? Sexual trauma directly affects parts of the brain that control memory, cognition, and emotional processing. Because the brain detects a threat, it activates a flood of hormones. The brain is highly sensitive to these chemicals and hormones. They impair rational thought and memory consolidation. They reduce energy and cause what's called toxic immobility, a temporary muscular paralysis, which I will discuss more in a minute. Victims may experience what's known as a flat effect, where they show little emotion, or they have emotional responses that seem inappropriate or unusual, given the circumstances, such as laughing or smiling. As a trained advocate, I will tell you that's one thing you're told immediately, to not judge the person's reaction. Trauma affects everyone, and shock affects everyone in different ways. Sometimes the person seems very upset and cries, sometimes the person seems very calm, sometimes the person is kind of laughing and lighthearted. This is because the person is in shock. Having a basic understanding that there is a wide range of reactions to a traumatic event may not seem typical, and the body's attempt to defend itself from a threat can affect these reactions. This is important for every criminal justice professional to understand. And let me just go through the basic biology really quick. We were hoping to have a little slide for you, but unfortunately that didn't work out. So basically, your brain, the main part of your brain, the front part, is the cortex. It's basically the computer of the brain. It processes information that comes in, and it makes sense and order out of it. The part of your brain that senses, that processes your senses is called the thalamus. It transmits the sensory information, what you see, smell, hear, to other parts of your brain. The part of your brain that regulates fear and the fear response is known as the amygdala. The amygdala is known as what controls your fight-or-flight instinct. There's also the third, that's the freeze, which is the toxic immobility I mentioned. So your brain can respond to fear in a fear-threatening situation in two ways. It can take the high road, where the cortex will actually think and process the information, or it can take the low road with the amygdala. Now, the whole animal instinct survival thing is about your amygdala. It actually works faster than the cortex of your brain. It's instantaneous, with no cortex processing whatsoever. It perceives a threat, and it immediately kicks into action, and it releases chemicals, your body releases chemicals and adrenaline to deal with a threat. Traumatized brains react to fear with their amygdala. They have no cortical control. The trauma actually changes your brain. Your amygdala becomes highly sensitive, hyperactive. It sees a threat, and immediately your heart rate will start to beat faster. Your breathing will start to escalate. There's no actual control of the person, it's just your body responding. So the hippocampus of your brain is the part that processes memory formation, and it builds these neural networks, these bridges, that connect to different parts of your brain and form memories. The trauma actually affects LTPs of your brain, inhibits the production of these important chemicals, and it's literally called death for the hippocampus. The part of your brain that processes memory literally shrinks from being exposed to trauma repeatedly because of the effect of all these bombardment of these chemicals constantly on your body. The adrenaline and the other chemicals that your body releases. They cause, and these are just natural, this is your natural response, this is what your body does when you're in a fearful situation. These chemicals are released to impair your thought, your rational thinking, to reduce your energy, and it prevents memory formation. The reason basically it's doing this is your body is sending, is diverting all of your energy to your limbs, other parts of your body, to, in case you're going to run, to flee, to give you some extraordinary strength. That's what we know as of like the adrenaline rush. So when your body releases these adrenaline, there are other chemicals that come into play to control the adrenaline rush, and that's what is, leads to toxic immobility, tonic immobility, excuse me. The body literally just is like in a paralysis. This condition can be very confusing for, and lead to some misunderstanding on professionals that don't understand the neurological, actual physical side effects of trauma and how it affects your body. So because of that, a normal, non-traumatic memory recalls lots of details. A traumatized person has a very fragmented memory, because the hippocampus, the part of your body that, the part of your brain that processes this, literally shrinks and is inhibited, will not form a concrete memory. If there's alcohol involved, as we know with a lot of rapes, alcohol also prohibits your body from causing, from collectively processing your memory correctly, and so you get a fragmented memory. So the whole point of this conversation is that this, this interaction of these parts of your brain, it's called the HPA axis. It's elevated for a 96-hour period. So after a trauma, or even after a triggering event such as discussing this trauma again, the chemicals of the body are reacting, the heart rate, the breathing. This is all just a biological response. So you're not going to be having clear, rational thoughts. You're not going to put things together contextually, like the time, the place. Those things might be a little jumbled in your mind. That's normal. That's actually biologically proven, scientifically proven. So shock and trauma affect everyone in similar but various ways, but to all, to everyone, the memory is impaired or affected. There's a hyperactive amygdala that continues throughout your life cycle, so you will have a heightened sense of fear. That's why if you know anyone that's, like, say for instance, a Vietnam veteran, the sound of a helicopter is extremely triggering to them. It's not because helicopters are so scary, it's because that's connecting to a different, to a memory for them. You actually store memory with your senses through trauma, much more so than your cortex, because that part of your brain is closer to your amygdala. You're also going to have emotional swings, like laughing and crying, or seeming cold and distant. So to go back to the report from the National Institute of Justice, it suggests using a victim-centered and trauma-informed method to dealing with survivors, recognizing that they're what may seem like a sketchy or unbelievable story, or that their story fluctuates and changes, that's actually quite normal to your body's response. It's scientifically proven. Dr. Vincent Filitti has greatly advanced the thought in this, the understanding of this, and I suggest you read more about the Adverse Childhood Experiences study if you like. Two-thirds of the population shows at least one category, and these are all things like being exposed to domestic violence as a child, being sexually abused as a child, having a parent that's not present in the home, whether that parent died or is in prison. So these are all impacting this population that we're here today discussing, and I implore you all to use more sensitivity and understanding in not only why the people are there, but why they're reacting to the things that are going on there. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I think the next speaker is already, on the list, has already spoken. Eunice Cleopatra.
So I'm Kelly Grace Price. I'm a very proud member of the Jails Action Coalition, and I'm the policy apprentice for Sonia Osorio at the National Organization for Women. I'll only take a couple minutes, because the things that I wanted to say here were presented by specialists and by interns that represented the voices of the survivors by specialists and by interns that represented the voices of the survivors on the island and in our city jails. I want to encourage you to pay special attention to the report that both Barbara and Melissa referenced, the Human Rights Watch report, and we'll be submitting that with our testimony when now files, probably right on August 34th, 31st at the deadline. I also would encourage you to familiarize yourself with Joanna Archibald's incredible It Starts With Believing campaign. She formulated the End Violence Against Women International Organization with a boatload of money from the federal government, and she has put on her website training modules for free that can be gone over at anyone's leisure, that describe specific language, specific investigatory techniques, specific report writing techniques for investigators to follow. All of this information and the webinars are free, did I mention, at no cost to the Department of Correction. Joanna Archibald ran the Special Victims Unit in San Diego for over 35 years before she left to start her organization, and I feel that she has no small amount of enormous contributions to make to the work that we're doing here. I also want to add that as a survivor of rape, that, and I've mentioned this before to the Board, that was marked as a fabricator by the police, this issue of believability and establishing a pathway for justice is paramount in a survivor's recovery. And I want to thank the Board, I will conclude my comments because I wanted to make them short, but I want to thank the Board for having the patience to listen to the technical presentations here today, and I very much encourage you to embrace the evidence-based methodologies that have been described to you. As you've heard, they are not ubiquitous in all the boroughs in New York City. That is something we have discovered in our organizing and have been horrified to find that it is literally better to be raped in certain boroughs in New York City than in others, because certain techniques are being employed in Manhattan, in Brooklyn, in parts of Queens by savvy specialists like Barbara and by Lynn Frederick Hawley at Bellevue, I beg your pardon, Mount Sinai. Those techniques, if employed by the Board of Correction, would actually lead the way for the NYPD to potentially ubiquitously employ these same techniques. So here you have a chance, finally for the Department of Correction to one-up the NYPD, and I highly encourage you to seize the day and, and to take that opportunity. Thank you again for listening to us, and we plan on, of course, on, on being here again in September. Enjoy your vacations.
So on that note, on behalf of the Board of Corrections, thank you all, and some had necessity left, but the testimony, the submitted testimony of the record will all be carefully looked at and considered, and we thank you very much for your time and your contribution.